Guys, welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. It's Jerry Miller. It's great to be with you on a Thursday. Spring has undoubtedly sprung across central Virginia. It's absolutely gorgeous outside. Frankly, feel a little overdressed in my Mr. Rogers cardigan. But I wanted to look sharp because we have a VIP on the show in Kathy Galvin. I think this is her third rodeo on the I Love Seaville set. Each time she has really hit grand slams, every single time. She's authentic, she's honest, she speaks from the heart. She is willing to showcase her vulnerabilities and let everyone know what she stands for. And I appreciate that here on this program. We will get to Kathy Galvin in a matter of moments here on the I Love Seaville Show. Before we do, let's thank some of the folks that make the program possible. First, we will give some love to Interstate Pest and Service Companies. It's a four-generation strong business. Started in 1969 with Mr. Wells and only one truck. He would go to his clients', his customers' homes. He would do pest control for them. And then he would find the nearest phone booth, payphone, and call the next customer from a payphone to see if they were ready for him to come over and do pest control for the next customer. Now it's four generations strong with the location in the Shenandoah Valley, office in Richmond, the headquarters on Harris, right around Boto's, right around the corner from Boto's. Commonwealth-wide footprint in its Interstate Pest and Service Companies. We will also give some props and some love to Scott Wagner of Dr. Scott Wagner Chiropractic in Sports Medicine. He is just an absolutely fantastic doctor. And whether it's sports medicine, physical therapy, or chiropractic care, he's changing people's lives. And his team is doing a tremendous job. Our shop, our advertising agency, the Advertising Agency of Record for both Interstate and Dr. Wagner, we are watching firsthand how these folks are bettering our community each and every single day. Harris Tolber, Judah Wickhauer, and Lauren Linsky upstairs make this program possible. I think on that note, Harris Tolber will go to the studio cam over here and will welcome Kathy Galvin to the show. First, I want to say thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Absolute pleasure. I look forward to speaking with you. I really appreciate you speaking from the heart every time you come on the show. And I'm going to get out of your way. And I'm going to throw an open-ended question to you. You're pursuing David Toscano's open seat in the House? Show is yours. Why the pursuit?
Well, kind of two general orientations, right? There's the personal, and then there's the policy action piece. I do think there's a couple of big, big looming challenges facing our district, the whole state for that matter. And it has to do with climate change, and it has to do with structural inequity. So when I talk about those two big buckets, we're talking about moving the state towards a renewable energy future, but also not only from a supply side, but a demand side. Let's make sure we have alternative modes of transportation, excellent bus transit. Make sure our roads and bridges are working well for everybody, cars and bikes and walking. So then there's the other piece about equity, right? We've been dealing with it very, very front and center in Charlottesville. And affordable housing is a big issue. Education is a big issue. Jobs, jobs that get people on a track to upward mobility is a huge issue. And progressive taxation. We've had a bruising budget season this year as a local councillor. And a lot of it is because we don't have the kind of tools we need to be fair when we tax people. Now, those are like the big policy buckets. I'm also very concerned about having a very safe and just world for our children. I have raised two kids here. You have a little one that you're raising right now. And safety is huge. How do we, how do we control the gun use that's become so rampant without infringing upon Second Amendment rights? And then in terms of justice, I do believe we have to do everything in our power to stop the practices that lead to mass incarceration of our African-American, particularly males. And as someone who is in the free choice arena, you might appreciate the fact that I've gotten to the point where I think we do need to safely, smartly regulate and have legalization of marijuana. It's getting to the point where this is just like too much like prohibition, where that was a failed effort to control activities that actually were things that people really wanted to do and wind up being things that actually be unfair to people. The personal end is, I love this place. I came here to go to architecture school, fell in love, raised a family, two sons, started my practice here, was always working in the trenches with affordable housing issues, became a PTO president. That's where I got to know firsthand how our neighborhoods are divided by class and race. And I saw how poverty really, really hurts African-American kids unfairly and most damaging than any other group. And then, so from there, I went to the school board and learned about ways to increase graduation rates and close achievement gaps, but there's a limit, especially when you've got a city like Charlottesville that has a legacy of slavery, Jim Crow, massive resistance, as well as an urban renewal that wiped out the African-American business district. So that's what brought me to the council. And then in the council, I've been doing an awful lot of things related to getting people out of poverty through employment and making sure that all of our neighborhoods are healthy and filled with opportunity, so that not only the children succeed in school, but their parents succeed in the workforce. So that's been, my story has been tied in a very deep-rooted way to this area. And now it makes sense the next level. I've always appreciated David Toscano's work. When I found out that he wasn't running, the stars seemed to align and said, Kathy, when you get a big yes like that and the path has already kind of been trodden and you're in a trajectory, you've got to go for it. What I've learned as a local legislator is something that I can take to the General Assembly for the benefit of the district that I love. And I have to say, I love the idea of representing city and county residents. It's an artificial boundary in my mind, but finally, I would be a representative for both, both people.
I love it. That's a sizzle reel. That was a fantastic answer right there. You have questions coming in. Neil Williamson, we will get to this question in a matter of moments. I'm going to ask one more before I get to yours, Neil. And thank you for watching, Neil. April Dent Ward, thank you for sharing. Laura Jackson, thank you for watching. We have a number of people watching across seven channels here on the I Love Seaville Network. How surprised were you when David Toscano, and we have this stuff here on set, he joined us and gave us 90 minutes of his time? I was just blown away with how gracious, yet confident, humble, yet courageous, just eloquent, visionary, deep thinker, team player, get a leader. I mean, I was just blown away by him. When he said he was going to retire, what were you doing? What immediately went through your mind? And how did that influence this decision to get in the race? Because up until that point, there was only one person, Sally Hudson, your opponent, who was going to challenge David Toscano on this race.
Well, for me, David was a mentor, is a mentor. And in fact, I have to admit that it was David Toscano that told me to run for the school board. So in some strange way, I have him to thank or blame, depending on how you look at it. I'll have to talk to my husband about that, who's been a solid supporter of mine ever since. But I was surprised. I had gone to David's fundraiser back in January, where I guess it was at the Metropolitan. I was firmly supporting David. And so when I got the word that he wasn't running, I certainly verified it. I watched the film footage where he made the speech. And I called people, got a sense of, so how, what's the logistics here? How could I get into the game and build a campaign team so quickly when I don't have anything? Well, within three days, I did get a campaign team together. Within two weeks, we got the petitions that we needed signed, all the paperwork's been filed as of last week. And I'm raising money. The raising money piece is a steep climb because I, again, I've only been at this game just a little bit over a month. And I definitely have been still talking to David. He is, again, is still a mentor for mine, for my campaign and for me personally. One thing about David is that he knows how to stand his ground.
Yes, he does.
And he also knows that the person that may be your supposed enemy today could be an ally tomorrow.
He highlighted that point on this set. And he did like a couple of anecdotes of how that actually transpired for him in his massive time in the House.
So I think for me fundamentally, and it goes to a human core value of mine, is that every human being has dignity. And you disagree with somebody, do it agreeably. Demonization of your opponent is not in my, my core value system.
Right.
And so when you look at the landscape in the General Assembly, we're just shy a couple seats in terms of having a Democratic majority in the House of Delegates. There's no done deal there. So you're going to have to work with a lot of people, different perspectives across that aisle. And again, my local experience as a city councillor and as a school board member, working across our boundary with my county supervisors, we've had to bridge differences. We've had to have these long, long processes in building trust. And that's why we have all, courts co-located today in the downtown court square area, which that was under threat. That was almost a point where they were going to be divided, and that would have been a horrible...
Would have been a nightmare.
Horrible outcome for, for our citizens.
For central Virginia.
Well, and it would have been a slam against our, our justice system.
Totally agree with that.
So it takes the ability to not, you know, to keep your powder dry, keep cool, try to find those common elements, those common ground pieces, and build on that. I think that's, that's a big lesson I've learned from David.
A lot of questions coming in. Let's get to Neil's question first. Neil Williamson, I follow him closely on Twitter. He's doing some big-time things with covering land use, covering Alamo County inside and out. He's the question for you. Councillor Galvin mentioned fair taxation that is prevented by current state code. Does she want Virginia locality, city and county, to have the option for income taxation powers?
What I'm talking about is when we were in the situation this past fiscal year, when we were setting up the budget, and we had these big looming investments in the redevelopment of our assisted housing and our public housing, as well as putting a down payment on beginning the process to modernize our schools and bring them up to the 21st century design standards, including an early childhood development center. That's what they call the reconfiguration plan. So I'll total with, with everything else we need, as well as our infrastructure investments. We've been relying an awful lot on the state through its smart scale funding to improve our intersections in our streets. Well, of the 20-some-odd projects that our region submitted to get smart scale funding, we only got one, thankfully one, and it was West Main Street. I say all this because what's happening is that when the state itself is not paying fully its mandates on public education, and that cost gets put onto the backs of local government, when the state isn't fully assisting in maintaining roads and bridges, I mean, look at the discussion that's been going on with I-81.
Right.
That falls onto the locality, additional burdens. And then when there is no statewide housing fund, that falls onto this locality. And then in terms of the federal government, when HUD has been gutted, there is no federal money going to affordable housing. And when you do have massive tax cuts, as was done under the Trump administration in 2018, the only vehicle to finance our affordable housing is the low-income housing tax credit. And that's a tax shelter for investors. If investors don't need a tax shelter anymore, guess what? They're not buying the credits. Then you're not getting the revenue to build affordable housing. I say all this stuff so that it, these enormous capital needs are falling on the backs of local government. And local government has only three major things: meals tax, lodging tax, and real estate tax. So meals tax and lodging taxes, they're flat, right? They're consumption taxes, and those are typically called regressive. The fact that we've got high inflation going on in our land values means that people are already paying more taxes in property taxes.
Right.
So to add more to that is only creating more of a burden for our low-income homeowners.
It's where it gets hit from both sides.
So we're, we have no tools. We don't have a, a local income tax, which is by definition more progressive. So people that have more means can actually pay to cover the expenses of a locality. The state of Virginia does have an income tax. The federal government does have an income tax. When you look at, you know, everyone's share of taxes, the least amount of taxes we pay at the state level is at the state level. So I want to find ways of raising revenue at the state level. It could be, you know, give us the taxing authority to have a transportation authority in our region, so that we can really robustly get the great separated interchange on RIO and 29, which everyone will agree is an important part of our economic system. You've got to have a good transportation system in order to have a thriving economy.
Public transportation system and affordable housing, I think, go hand in hand. I think I did a, in fact, I know, I did a thorough analysis of this on I Love Seaville. If we have, iloveceville.com, if we have a more robust public transportation system, then we will have more robust affordable housing. What I mean by that, you can find potentially a two-bedroom, nice home in Louisa, Orange or Fluvana, it's going to run you maybe $750 a month. That same two-bedroom is not going to be as nice in the city of Charlottesville, and it's probably going to run you about $1,250 a month. You can take that savings of roughly $500 or $600 a month, and you can use it, if we had robust public transportation across central Virginia, as ways to pay your bills, as ways to potentially climb the vertical ladder of profession and income. Instead, what's happening, because public transportation is not reliable, approachable, robust, or accessible, folks are burning the $500 or $600 in savings by moving to the outer counties and fuel and wear and tear to the vehicle. Public transportation, certainly something that needs to be highlighted. I'm surprised that it's not emphasized more.
It's, I have a three-part platform. One is a more sustainable future, one is a more equitable future, and the third is a just and safe world. So under the, the sustainable future part, public transit is huge. Because if you get more people using excellent transit service, you also are not, you know, adding greenhouse gas emissions to the atmosphere.
Exactly.
And I'm glad you brought up that point, because on average, the cost of a car ownership is about $9,000 to $10,000 a year. If you had robust transportation, which we, I am part of the Regional Transit Partnership with Diantha McKeel, and I believe, you know, Mayor Walker and Ned Galloway are also in the Regional Transit Partnership with me. We're working to improve the coordination between the Charlotte area transit, university transit, and then Jaunt. So that's the first step. I think overall, we're going to have to go through a regional transit authority, which means it's going to be like a system that's governed by one entity to make sure it really works. But if we get to the point where we, we've got to get down to 15-minute maximum wait times. Right now, we're dealing with 60 minutes and 30 minutes.
Right.
And so to get to that reduced headway, as they call it, you're going to have to like double your fleet of buses.
At least.
And you're going to have to get, people don't like to use the word, density. You need to have at least a minimum of seven dwelling units per acre to be able to have a robust, high-efficiency bus service. Even though people think Charlottesville's dense, it's really about five dwelling units per acre right now. So we've got room to grow, and the county's even more low-density. But in the urban ring, we have, we're in striking distance. So if you can think about having these kind of nodes of development, which is what we're trying to do with hydraulic, the small area plan, and they're trying to do in the county with the RIO, small area plan, these aren't just wonky planning things. These are actually setting up a framework to redevelop in a way that gives you a walkable urban environment that doesn't diminish quality of life, but sets you up to sustain a bus system and maybe even a bus rapid transit line along 29. Now, wouldn't that be something?
That would be amazing. That would be amazing. Sizzle reel that. I think that's important information right there. Number of questions coming in. Emily Holter, thank you for watching. Thank you for joining us on the show. Kevin Costanzo, Beth Nichols, thank you for watching and joining us on the show. Crystal Johnson, Bill Grandford, Chris Turner in Richmond. We have folks watching in Charlotte, Washington DC, and in Pennsylvania right now. Like and share the stream for us. That would mean the world to us.
Kevin Costanzo's my son.
Oh, well, you know what? He's watching and he likes what you have to say. Okay? Keith Smith, thank you for sharing this post. Thank you for sharing the feed. Let me throw this to you here. This is a question, and, and, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to pick the one, three questions came in from JoJo Robertson. I'm going to pick one that I feel like is most appropriate. And the question I have is, why, this is her question, why did you vote against the living wage?
That was about five years ago. At that time, I said, you know, 70 to 80% of the people that live in the city, that work in the city don't live here. Wouldn't it make more sense that we invest in an employer-assisted housing program? Number two, I said, the, the living wage is a statewide issue. You start having it done by jurisdiction, by government, you wind up setting up a situation where one, one jurisdiction is in competition with the other, and then you have a migration of businesses. And at the time, there was this thought that we were going to somehow shame the university into raising their own living wage. That didn't happen. You needed a President Ryan. So I stand firmly in the logic that I presented at that time, which was, we needed to have an employer-assisted housing program, and that would have had much more impact on two things. It would have gotten our employees to live in the city where they work. That would have generated a lot more understanding between our employees and our citizens. And number two, it would have gotten congestion off the road. Get people living near where they work, and you've got a twofer. And then they're able to afford where they work. $15 an hour, we all know, for a family of two and with three kids is, is still not enough. So I, that's the way I think. I'm strategic. I look at the long game. And I don't want to waste money. I don't want to spend money without being more thoughtful about all the other options on the table. And I presented those options. Everyone wanted to move forward right away with the, with the $15 an hour. And I support that now because I am a team player.
Don Gatheres, thank you for joining us. T. Chanel Newsom, thank you for joining us. Terry and Ray Cadell, thank you for watching and sharing the show. If you can like and share the feed, that would mean the world to us. Couple thousand people watching. One thing I would like to throw to you is, is, you know, when you heard that David Toscano was not going to run for reelection, and you had, you, everyone realized, all right, then, there's only one horse in the race, and that's Sally Hudson, Associate Economics Professor at the University of Virginia. I'm going to compare and contrast the two candidates. I'm not picking a favorite. I'm just creating a list and putting characteristics on either side of the list. You have one candidate, and her campaign headquarters are on the second floor in this building. One candidate who is never been, never held in elected office. One candidate who is an associate professor. One candidate that is single, does not have a family. And one candidate that is new to the area, new-ish to the area. You have another candidate, and I'm talking about you now, who has held, has two terms in city council prior to that school board, and a architect, a wife and a mother of two, and someone who has been entrenched in Charlottesville and central Virginia. So I think what I just said there is applicable, fair, and just a straight-up characteristic outline of the two candidates that are running for the Democrats. A June 11th primary is going to determine pretty much this race, unless an independent gets into this race after June 11, or before June 11. This is the question I have for you here. Your opponent, Sally Hudson, what are you seeing?
I don't know her very well. I'm sure by the end of our campaign season, which will end in June 11, on June 11, we'll get to know each other better. I know that she's a very intelligent person and has her economics degree from MIT. I've got an economics degree from Boston University, not as, as an elite university as MIT.
BU is a good school.
But I love BU, big and ugly.
It's a good school.
So, and, and my focus as an undergraduate was, it was economics and geography, but I focused on housing economics. So I was working in housing way back when. And then, you know, I, I can work hard and dig deep and stay the course for this area because I know it and I love it. It is, when you raise your children in a place, you get into every nook and cranny.
Absolutely.
We, we were at Min Springs and, you know, Tonstler Park. We climbed the Blue Ridge, and we hike now Saunders Trail. So I think you get a real sense of place. And when you are tied to a place, this is what home means. And I, this is my home. And I want to make sure she has got the very best care and the very best kind of advocate.
Look at you personifying Charlottesville. Personifying Charlottesville, I like it. She's getting metaphorical here on the I Love Seaville Show.
Yeah, well, and she's, she's our mother. She's, you know, so I, I think of her as, like all of us, we are, we are trying to be our best. We're trying to get better and better all the time. But she's a fighter. You know, we survived August 12, 2017, and she's come back stronger. And I'm, I've been talking about our bruising budget season. Well, our local restaurants, which by the way, we don't have chains in Charlottesville. These are local restaurants, local food in our restaurants. They are the reason why we can support the redevelopment of our public and assisted housing. They're the reasons why we can begin the process of making our schools come up to the 21st century. So I thank them profusely. And the tourism industry, right? Everyone thinks that it's kind of not essential, but it is, it's hugely important to our region. It brings in like for every dollar we spend on it, $6 come back in.
Right.
So it, to me, these are the major pillars of our local economy that provide us with the revenues we need to do the, the things we want and the things we must do, which is make sure that we are an inclusive community. So that's why I think, you know, the differences are going to just simply be a matter of, maybe perhaps intensity and degree of, of, of understanding. We're both progressives. There's no doubt about it. And I think one of the other things I'd like to point out is that things that I started as a school board member, you know, which helped draft that plan to reconfigure our schools and bring them up to the 21st century standards, that I, as an architect, know they needed to be. And that when we go and, and look at the groundwork that was laid to get us to the point where the neighborhood context for the redevelopment of Friendship Court and Crescent Halls in, in South First Street could happen, those were initiatives that I, I began as a school board member, and now 10 years later, as a city councillor, I was able to vote and pass the funding to make them real. So again, you know, I guess what I want to stress is, great ideas only become, you know, great applause lines if they're not backed up by grit, staying power, and know-how. That's what I believe, and that's what I provide. That's what I've always shown. And we'll have important debates, but there's some fundamentals here, just like winning a basketball game.
Sure, you're competitive.
And, but the fundamentals often win the day.
Yeah. Carol Forbes, thank you for joining us. Nicole Scrow, thank you for joining us. Like and share the feed, guys. Give the show a like and share if you could. I have a question, I have a number of questions coming in. This question from Twitter, and you can connect with me on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook. Send us a DM or just @Symbolist. This is from someone living in Richmond. It's at University of Virginia Double Who. And this Double Who says, I have one, don't use my name, Jerry, but I would like to eventually move back to Charlottesville. I am a upper, I'm a professional in Richmond right now, and we're actively, my family and I, trying to move back to Seaville. We followed August 12 very closely, and it really hurt us because both my wife and I went to UVA, and we love Seaville dramatically. Councillor Galvin, what would you do differently with August 12, now with the benefit of hindsight?
Well...
That's a good question.
That's a good question. And we've, we're already doing it. We're about to hire a new city manager. We have a new police chief. We've already hired a new communications director, and we've changed our permitting laws so that... laws so that we can at least exclude torches, right, in general assemblies in our public spaces. Still can't, still can't exclude semi-automatic rifles, but that's another story. One of the things that I'll hope to work on when I'm in the General Assembly. So, and we're starting, and we're definitely working on changing that narrative. And the narrative of Charlottesville on August 12th that was pervasive was that Charlottesville is the, the source of the hateful speech, the source of the hateful acts that were expressed and committed against our immigrant populations and our African-American citizens. The reality is, we were a staging ground for what is, we now know is the white power movement. And I'm proud of the fact that thanks to our counter protesters, and then the anniversary date, thanks to our local police and as support with the state police, we showed that we fight back. We're not going to condone white supremacy and white nationalism. The, the white power movement has no place in Charlottesville.
Amen to that.
So we, it was a watershed moment for Charlottesville, but I think for the whole Commonwealth and for the country. This, we stood our ground. No, this hate has no place here. We've heard that line before. It means something. And that's, that's something that, you know, I am now carrying that on in everything I do. And, and not only are we talking in terms about the rhetoric or the actions, but the fact that we finally are investing in the redevelopment of our assisted and public housing, it's a beautiful coincidence. We needed to wait for the residents to be ready. This was a resident-driven plan, both in Friendship Court and the public housing community. It, it happened to coincide with a moment in time when we needed a win really badly. And that win is a combination of investing in a future that's more inclusive and a future that's more fair and just. So I, I feel like, you know, we've done what we can do, and please come, this is a place to be proud of. It really is. I'm, I, and I would be proud to represent her in the General Assembly.
Olga Morris, thank you for watching. Olga, I think you're watching from Puerto Rico.
Oh, Olga!
Thank you for turning into the show. Yes, from Forward Adelante, the Latin Journal.
Yay!
Thank you for watching, Olga. Bon Romer, thank you for watching. Larry Rhodes, thank you for watching. Chris Stevenson in Croze, thank you for watching. This is a question I have for you. I look at you, and you undoubtedly, and we have, you know, a lot of similarities, you undoubtedly bleed Charlottesville and have, as you've personified her, you have her in your blood, you want what's best for her. You want to leave Seaville in a better place than when you first arrived. We're social entrepreneurs and conscious capitalists, and as a for-profit business, that is our mindset, too. Leave Seaville in a better place than we first arrived. Here's where I'm, I'm going with this. Did you consider at all running for Charlottesville City Council for a third term? Because you, you still have some stuff on the, on the table that you want to become a reality. Did you feel compelled to run for a third term to get some of this stuff done?
Well, thank you for asking that. Of course, you know, there is unfinished business. One of the things that I'd been fighting for, for a long time, was changing our local zoning so that we would be much more inclusive without destroying the physical beauty of our place. And by that, I mean, yeah, free up our, our one zoning to include all different kinds of housing types so that more people could live in 60% of our land.
You put the percentage in place. Is it what, 55, 56% of Charlottesville land is zoned for single-family detached homes?
Exactly. Yes, and so there's a lot of land...
That's a problem.
And, and, but if you expand it with accessory dwelling units, but if you expand and also allow people to put in place, you know, multiplexes that can look like single-family homes and, and rows of townhouses, all you need to do is look at, at some parts of the area, just, just around the downtown mall, and you can see that beautiful mixture of housing types. And the scale and the physical beauty of the neighborhood is the same. So we're not talking about destroying the physical form. And again, as an architect and urban designer, I am sensitive to that. I am not about putting nine-story buildings in the middle of a residential neighborhood. You've got to be sensitive to the context. Having said that, there are parts of the city where we do need to grow, and we can be more robust. I look at Water Street as one of those places, that that's where, you know, we have the engine of economic power.
You want more density there?
I voted for West Second Street. I wanted to get the Dubry Hotel in place. I'm, I think the, the 550 Water Street is a gorgeous building.
It's a gorgeous building. It, it does not solve the, the density affordable housing issue. I mean, some of those listings, two and a half million dollars.
It's, it's expensive, yes.
Two and a half million.
They also generate a lot of revenue for the city.
That's true. That's a good point.
So in other areas of the city, which I've been a proponent of small area plans.
Right.
I'm actually working on a resolution right now where we were going to establish a minimum percentage of affordable housing in all our small area plans. There's 12 of them. The strategic investment area, the area south of the downtown mall is one of them. But by that, I mean, we, we put a toehold of affordable housing in each and every area of our city that is ripe for redevelopment. Unfortunately, we didn't do that on West Main Street. But guess what? We've done that on Carlton Avenue. That's with the Carlton Views Apartments. We've got great affordable housing there now, so as that place redevelops, it's going to be mixed income in the area. And by doing so, we're making sure we're inclusive. So it's a strategic move to make sure that we get in there, and that's why I wanted a land bank. I want to get our land bank ordinance finally passed so that we can be nimble and get, get properties in place all over the city that then are reserved for redevelopment by our nonprofit housing providers and Housing Authority and, and any provider that knows how to use Lytech financing. So that's, to me, that's, it's a matter of, of, I know I'm going to be leaving the city, though, with a new city manager. One of the other things that I've worked for the last three years to get was a manager for long-range planning and design. That job is posted. I don't know if it's going to close soon, but that's a direct report to the city manager. That's the professional who will be in charge of updating our comp plan, integrating our affordable housing strategy with that comp plan, and changing our zoning so that it's not this crazy dance. We have to rezone something and then ask for an SUP and take two years, and it's not a done deal that it's going to happen. So our zoning right now is honored more in the breach than in the practice.
Right.
So that's, hurts our credibility as a local government, and it adds cost to development, which means it leaves out the possibility of more affordable housing.
I love it. Olga, Olga Morris says, hi there, Councillor Galvin.
Hi.
A, a People's Councillor, Ola from Puerto Rico. So Olga, thank you for joining us. Bellamy Brown currently watching. We have three city council candidates that are running for the open seats that are currently watching. Like and share the feed, no matter one of the seven channels you're watching across the I Love Seaville network. Thank you, Larry Rhodes, for tuning in. Let me throw this to you here. And we're going to get back to the macro, and the macro is your push for this open house seat. I'm going to talk a little bit more of the micro here in the city of Charlottesville. New police chief, new city spokesman, we've got Brian Wheeler over there. Interim city manager, Mike Murphy, actively interviewing a city manager to replace Mike. New city attorney, I mean, clean house.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the, the three councillors that were actively part of, you know, A-12, yourself, Dr. Bellamy, Mike Signer, not running for city council again. This is the question, and it's a version, and, and I'm trying to do a version of your question here, Carol Thorpe. Thank you for watching, Carol Thorpe. Clean house across the board post-A-12. Put that in perspective, the impact of the house cleaning across the board. Was it needed? Is it a direct result of August 12th?
August 12th demonstrated for us, for me personally, I'm going to say for me personally, where our weak links were in local government. Now, we're a small city, not quite 50,000 people. Most cities, I don't think, would have been prepared for what happened. And it's important for the public to know that even now, they're saying that, you know, we learned at that time that the, the groups that came and invaded our city that day didn't represent a credible threat. I don't know what a credible threat is if that wasn't a credible threat.
Yeah, I was, I watched it firsthand from right here, and that looked like more than a credible threat to me.
So I'm going to also be very firm on this. We've got to come to grips with the fact that we do absolutely have domestic terrorism.
Yeah.
And you cannot deny the fact that we have domestic terrorism.
I totally agree with that. Some people do not agree with that comment.
I, and so when you, when you finally have that in place as a category of criminal activity, then you begin to be able to marshal resources that are much broader than your local, local police forces. I also think that we need to do a much better job at getting people off the track of radical terrorism. And the Trump administration actually defunded that component that was related to white supremacy. We still have the piece for Islamic terrorism, but he, his administration defunded the, kind of the programming to try to keep young people off that path. I don't know if we can try to do that on the state level, but I think we, we've got to try. I don't want people to be intoxicated by some notion of affiliation with a, a group of people that are all about hate. And if, you know, so that, that, so getting back to the, the idea of cleaning house...
Yeah.
I, I feel like I, I have done my level best to make this house more stable and sturdy so that the next group of people don't have to start from scratch rebuilding the government. And two terms is typical. Three terms is rare. And I do believe in the citizen legislator. Let other people take a, a crack at this job. It's a hard one.
Yeah.
It's a hard one. But I learned a lot, and I'm ready to take what I've learned to the next level. And I will be an able, willing partner with our local governments at the state house, at the state level. So it's, to me, I'm not leaving. I'm, I'm just going to be a different energy and a different source of kind of convening.
I don't think it's like leaving. I think it's just making your toolbox a little bit more robust. It's kind of how I see it. And I'm not, you know, I'm just...
And I do see where the local governments, like, Charlottesville can't have inclusionary zoning.
Yeah.
So I'm going to work to change the law. I mean, Alamo County has it, why can't Charlottesville?
We have a question coming in from Herb Porter, and turn that segment into a sizzle reel. Start with my question, please, about cleaning house, all the way through, through Kathy's answer. I thought it was solid. Herb Porter has this question. He says, Kathy, knowing that we don't have a statue of a black person in the city of Charlottesville, which is named after a black woman, would you support the erection of a statue of Queen Charlotte, wife of the English King George III, in front of City Hall on the Mall, in front of the silhouettes of the past presidents? And I'm going to piggyback Herb's question with your stance on statues. And there's limited things that you can say here. You're actively involved in a lawsuit.
I'm in litigation, right.
In a lawsuit, as we speak. So statues in general, I think it's certainly relevant with your campaign.
Yeah.
And Herb's question about a, a need for a statue of a black person in front of City Hall.
Absolutely. We, we need more statues of our, of our African-Americans all over the city. And we also know that we are a community that loves to be engaged and likes to weigh in. And so Mr. Porter's recommendation is a very good one. We're going to have to find out what other people want. And we, and to do that, we're probably going to have a public process. I can say this, that before we got all entangled with the lawsuits against me and the other four councillors with regards to the removal of the statues that were in what is now East Market Street Park and Court Square Park, I wrote the resolution with the assistance of two landscape architects and also Andrew Douglas, African-American Heritage Center, to create what would have been a, a new precinct that would have told the story of Charlottesville from slavery through Reconstruction, through Jim Crow, and then into the present day with urban renewal and, and today. We can't touch those parks right now. Nothing. I mean, we're not even changing the flower beds. And so it's painful. That's why I worked with Andrew Douglas and then Jelaine Schmidt to get them and ask them to please craft a, a pilgrimage to Montgomery so that we can begin the process at least of getting the Equal Justice Initiative Memorial in Charlottesville.
Good answer. Let me, let me throw this to you guys. Like and share the feed wherever you're watching. Leslie Gourde, thank you for joining us on the program. One-time soccer coach at Western Amherst High School. Leslie, we would love to have you play some music on the show tomorrow, Leslie Gourde. This is what I'd love to throw to you. And, and this is a question that I have, just direct message to me on Twitter, and it's about reparations. And I'm going to take it a step further. Vinegar Hill in Charlottesville, nasty, nasty history of what transpired at Vinegar Hill. Literally taking homes and businesses away from our black community in the city of Charlottesville. And homes and businesses are how you can build generational wealth. So when we take someone's home away from them, we're taking their opportunity to build equity in their home. We're taking an opportunity for them to build quality of life and memories in their home, to potentially take a loan out from a bank and use the home as collateral. When the home is paid off, it could be an investment in a portfolio that can be sold and turned into potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then you also take away businesses from black entrepreneurs that could be passed on to their kids and/or generate money for them in short, mid, and long term. This is the question about, the question is, ask Kathy about reparations. I'm going to take it a step further and say, what is our role as leaders in 2019? Because I'm personally struggling internally with this. As someone who's been in this community 19 years and has built successful businesses, I feel internal strife and want to leave my community in a better place than when I first arrived like you do. And the question I have for you is, what is our role as leaders, people that are now looked upon as dictating the pace and tempo and future of our community? What is our role for offering reparations, creating reparations, you know, figuring what happened out with Vinegar Hill in this community and what can be done about it?
Let me just start with a little bit of the, my personal, okay? So I'm second-generation American. I, my parents were one side Lithuanian, other side Irish, came from really, really dirt poor families from what they called the old country. So my dad had an eighth-grade education. My Lithuanian grandmother was illiterate, didn't, she was a shepherdess. So, but from that, they worked in the shoe factories in Brockton, a shovel factory with my Irish side. My Irish grandmother was a domestic. So similar, some similar class stories, but I know that, you know, within a one or two generations, I was, I went to college. I am well aware of, you know, the color of my skin mattered, because I see multiple generations of African-Americans in Charlottesville and all over the country still in poverty. My family was able to jump out of poverty, and I can only surmise that it's related to the fact that I was white. So there, there is a, a real understanding on my part that, yes, I have been privileged by the fact that I am a white woman. Doesn't remove the, the disparities that I've had to face as a woman in the, in the, in the professional world and in terms of what I got paid, but it also means that I'm well aware that, that there is something seriously wrong with that picture. Now, what do we do about it? I do believe we need to, at every turn, and this is related to my more just world, get to the point where we are investing in African-American businesses, just like we invest in tech and biotech industries with tax credits and so on and so forth. But for example, that's why I...
New Hill Development Corp.
I started with New Hill Development Corporation. I went to a conference in Seattle, I learned about the Seoul District in Portland. I came back, that was in 2017. It was May. And I put together a group of people that I knew, all African-Americans, and I says, what do you think about this idea? Okay, they, several months later, we come back, people are moving forward with, with what will now become known as New Hill Development Corporation. I worked... I worked relentlessly to make sure that we got that going, and yes, it was a gift. It was a half-million-dollar gift to get this startup going. And that's, that to me is part of making sure that we are undoing the damage of Vinegar Hill. The other thing I've learned as a local legislator was that local governments, when they are putting out contracts for like building the Belmont Bridge or rebuilding West Main Street, building Ragged Mountain Dam, local governments based on state procurement laws have to go the lowest qualified bid. We can't even hire a local. We can't make that a bias. And then, we can't make sure that we're hiring African-Americans, minority groups, women.
So, you're saying the bid process should change?
I'm saying the bid process should change for local governments so that they can make a condition, local hiring?
The problem with that is, just playing devil's advocate with you, the problem with that is, and I agree, supporting local, I'm playing devil's advocate for the sake of a show.
Sure.
The problem with that is, that could lead to collusion in some circumstances.
And that's a very good point. So, we've gotta make sure that we have the laws and the processes set in place that that does not happen. Now, every year, I have to submit a statement of economic interest.
Right.
That's supposed to come up and things like that.
Right.
And we're seeing in places like DC where the councilors are getting caught doing stuff like that. And that's why you've gotta have transparency. But I also mean that we're missing out on elevating many of our local residents out of poverty, because we cannot hire them to do the job of rebuilding their own city.
Right, and it would be difficult with the cost of living being so high in Charlottesville. Oftentimes, it is difficult to pick a local firm, because they have to charge price points to, that counterbalances the cost of living and the cost of housing and the cost of everything being so high. And that's oftentimes why these out-of-market bids, these bids are being won by out-of-market businesses.
That's why I'm saying it's gotta be one condition. It still doesn't remove the other benefits, but right now, we're prohibited from looking at that. And if we see a public good that outpaces the other good of a low-cost bid, then let the jurisdiction do that.
Okay, okay.
One other thing is, when I was working in a professional capacity, and we were actually going after contract to do some corridor planning for Hull Street in Richmond. And Richmond, because they're a bigger city and they were able to go through all the hoops of the studies that they needed to get done, they can actually establish that 10% of their hiring, and it could be through subcontracting, has to be African-American or minority. And what was beautiful about that, when we went to the bid conference, because we were going after a contract, they, the city of Richmond made it very easy for us to network with professional African-American-owned businesses. I'll never forget it. It was great. So that we were pairing up with other contractors and subcontractors to make us a much more inclusive diverse team. And that's how you break down the good old boy network.
What advantages, and we'll get to Harris Tolber. Harris Tolber, our director, guys, is gonna ask a question for Kathy Galvin here. She's given us 55 minutes, we're gracious and mindful of her time, which is her most precious commodity. Carly Teigler and Christopher Eagle, thank you for watching us and joining us on the program. The show is in fuego right now. This is the question that I have for you, and then Harris will go to you. What advantages, I called it when you were in the House, first being on city council, and made your toolbox of resources a little bit more robust. What are the advantages or the resources that you would have being potentially, you know, in the House of Delegates as opposed to city council and the good and the impact that you can make?
Um, let's think about it in terms of like, say, sustainability issues, right? When I am in the House of Delegates, and I've been in the cockpit and I see how they make decisions about smart-scale funding, and I see the pools of money available, I really do wanna make sure that we add, because this city, this area is all about what they call multimodal, walking and biking and taking the bus, making greenways that are actually great for commuting. I wanna open up the criteria for selection and give more weight to those kinds of multimodal aspects of getting state funding for transportation investments. And that way, an area like ours that is really committed to becoming sustainable, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, won't be at a disadvantage. That's just one example. So, in terms of looking at being equitable, right now, we can't do inclusionary zoning. And by that, we mean that we can't require that developers build affordable units in their projects just as a matter of course. It has to go through a song and dance with special use permits. Number one, locally, we need to make sure the review process is very efficient and very fair so that developers aren't getting, you know, losing money and can't keep it in business. So, that's one idea. The, as a person that would be in the General Assembly, moving us towards expanding pre-K education, that's a twofer, right? Right now, the state does help with four-year-old programs, it doesn't very much help with three-year-old programs, and the latest brain science on children's brain development and cognitive development shows that zero to three are critical for the formation of a child's ability to acquire vocabulary and then actually become successful, not just in school, but just getting into kindergarten. So, you expand that pre-K as part of your public educational system, you're also helping families that are burdened by the cost of childcare. Childcare is like today, it's almost like going to college. It's like a college tuition at 15,000 a year.
Right.
That will help our families, and that will also close achievement gaps. So, that's why being in that perch is gonna give me more breadth to change fundamentals. And so, you're getting into the area of a more just and safe world, as I said already, change state procurement laws to let local governments have more latitude. If you see the method of my madness here, it's chipping away at what they call the Dillon Rule.
Right, right, right.
To give more autonomy to the local governments.
To the localities. Yeah, I mean, it's so, it...
Without going, you know, full frontal assault.
Right.
Which could wind up being dead in the water and waste a lot of energy, let's go, let's go keep the vision.
Was it Iowa that originated the Dillon Rule? And I believe it was Iowa, and now Iowa has...
It was, yeah, I think it was.
And then Iowa has now reverted back saying, "The Dillon Rule is archaic, what the hell were we thinking?" And I feel the same. Harris Tolber, we're trying to get, you know, this guy empowered on this program. Jump in here with a question, Harris Tolber.
All right. First, I wanna say, thanks, Councilor Galvin, for coming on the program. I have tremendous respect for, A, your passion for Charlottesville, it's very apparent. You know, you raise children here, as you said, you know every nook and cranny, and you also have just a passion to help people, so I respect that. My question has to do with background checks as they relate to, you know, the national gun violence issue. And I was, and my question is, do you think that background checks infringes on Second Amendment rights? And if I could give my little perspective, is that I've always had the opinion that I haven't been able to understand why people do not want to support a background check of people who could, their community members who could potentially be criminals, who could potentially be mentally unstable, being able to wield a weapon of mass destruction. And my other thought on the issue is that, back when the founding fathers, you know, wrote the Constitution, it took like three minutes to reload a musket, it was short term, it was short range, and, you know, they could never have predicted the technological advances that we've had. So, honestly, open-ended for you, you know, that's my question.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And that was a very passionate question.
Yeah, I like that question.
I, we gotta close the loopholes in the background checks. I'm a firm believer in making sure that people that are going to be having guns are responsible enough to have them, for the very reasons that you talked about. Now, let me go back a little bit. There were pieces of legislation that was, that were put forth by David Toscano, Creed Deeds, over the past several years, since August 12, 2017, that were going to give us more common sense gun laws. And I did go before the committees, both the Senate and the House of Delegates, and I could see the wall, and I began to understand there really is power behind certain lobby groups, the National Rifle Association, number one. So, the fact that we didn't have more horrible atrocities on August 12 because of all the semi-automatic rifles I saw on people's shoulders.
It was a war zone. It was crazy. It was terrifying.
It's pretty amazing.
I totally agree with that.
And so, that's why it was always, it was ludicrous to me that our Virginia laws allowed us to prohibit Swiss Army knives and torches from assembly, large assemblies in our public parks, but they wouldn't let us preclude AR-15s. And I'm not, I know a lot of, you know, people I've been talking to, they don't want to have their Second Right Amendment rights infringed upon, and I believe in that, but I also, as someone that has taken an oath of office to protect the well-being and safety of my constituents, I saw firsthand how the threat of violence was impinging upon other First Amendment rights, i.e. free speech and the right to assemble. So, let's balance it out. Not, one bill of right cannot supersede others. And that's what a rational approach to governance is all about. You gotta balance the contending interests and get to the point where people can understand, "Look, this makes sense. This really makes sense." And your point about, you know, reloading a musket, you're absolutely right. In the time it took to get one musket ball in that gun back in the day...
Hundreds of rounds of ammunition can be fired.
It's frightening.
Yeah, it's terrifying. It's terrifying. Neil Williamson, guys, go to my Facebook page in the comments section, and Neil Williamson has a very thorough outline and analytical perspective of the Dillon Rule from Iowa.
Oh, thank you, Neil.
Yeah, it is very solid, very solid.
Thank you.
I'm mindful of your time, I know you are very busy. We're 65 minutes in, this will be the last question, and we'll get off air. We'll have you connect with the camera here, you can go in any direction you want. It's an open-ended question. Why should folks vote for you?
I have integrity. I, what I think and what I say and what I do are all connected. I've demonstrated the ability to get things done in the face of adversity, and I will do the same in the General Assembly as I've done in the city of Charlottesville. I also believe that there's an element of discernment that's important, that you've gotta know when to stand your ground, and you gotta know when it's time to negotiate. You gotta know when it's time to understand that this is a regional issue that the state should control, you gotta know when it's time for the locality is the one closest to the problem and the other one's best equipped to solve it. As I said earlier, I support a $15 living wage statewide, because that is something that will keep all of our local economies from cannibalizing each other, and it's also the right thing to do. But I also understand in terms of the point of a local government having the tools to create its own zoning strategies, let them decide that themselves. A lot of it's already possible, but, you know, don't hold back. I think that's what I mean by discernment, that comes with experience, that comes with knowing how Richmond works relative to local governments. So, people will get me, and they will know that I am a listener, I will be a presence in this district. I fortunately will not have leadership responsibilities in the House of Delegates like David Toscano did. So, I see great opportunities to be the one that can be here convening the county and the city elected officials, coming more often to have town halls with my constituents, and really understanding what's near and dear to you, and understanding, you know, what, again, helping us all understand better what makes sense to be a regional state issue and what makes sense to be a local issue, and together, what I like to call, we'll create what I call the beloved community, something that Dr. Martin Luther King talked about, which is a place where everybody gets to partake in the bounty of this beautiful world, and that where disagreement is handled nonviolently.
Respectfully.
And that no one is demonized for having a different opinion. So, that's what I bring, that's the carriage I bring. I learned compassion and empathy when I was a child, thanks to my parents. And, you know, it was in a classroom, eight years old, teacher's aide, a Head Start program. My mother started Head Start in Brockton, Massachusetts, and we were barely making ends meet ourselves, but it was there I learned that no matter how tough I had it, you helped somebody else. And that's where that comes from, that call to serve. So, I think, when you get me, you get someone who's driven to serve you, because I love this place and I love the people in it.
Sizzle reel. Start with my question, and all the way through that answer, that was solid. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, I'm grateful. I'm really grateful.
I'm very grateful.
68 minutes, and I know your time is valuable.
Yeah.
And guys, what I wanna do, and Harris, we'll go into one shot here as we close the program quickly. The whole point of the platform that is I Love Seaville is to showcase Charlottesville from many different sides. It's not about political endorsements, but it's about introducing you to options. And having a long-form show like this allows you to get to know folks in a different way than a 15-second soundbite on television or a two- or three-sentence quote in a newspaper can do. And I think what this show offers is authenticity, it offers a safe platform for people to share ideas, and it offers, and my hope is, it offers a platform where we can have discourse and disagree and agree, but do it in respectful fashion, because we embody the mindset of the Golden Rule, where we try to treat everybody as we wanna be treated ourselves. And that's literally how I'm trying to live my life, how our team does, how I'm trying to raise my son, how my wife and I are trying to do this as a family. So, I think that's undoubtedly what I Love Seaville embodies. And I think that's something that we need to integrate and assimilate and really get far and wide in Charlottesville and central Virginia, that we can agree to disagree, and we can have discourse, and we can do it in a way that's respectful, that still moves the needle in a positive direction. Okay? So, when we disagree with somebody, and I think social media exasperates this problem, where people start getting angry with each other, and before they know it, they're in this argument in a comment section under a Facebook post, saying the nastiest, meanest things that they would never say to somebody face-to-face, eyeball-to-eyeball, nose-to-nose. So, my hope is that we use social media for positive, and my hope is that we figure out ways to really embody the Golden Rule on a day-to-day basis. My name is Jerry Miller, his name is Harris Tolber, he's the director. Judah Wickauer and Lauren Linsky, it's the I Love Seaville Show. In an hour and 20 minutes, we're gonna have the Caring for Creatures show. It is Central Virginia's first no-kill animal sanctuary, and animals mean the world to me.
Yes.
And the president and founder of Caring for Creatures, Mary Burkholz, has spent 30 years of her life saving the most at-risk animals across the Commonwealth, and we're gonna spotlight her at 3:00 PM on the I Love Seaville Network. Thank you to Kathy Galvin for joining us. We'll catch you guys in 80 minutes. Enjoy your day.
Great.
It was awesome.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.